Council meeting to order. The pledge will be led by Councilwoman Barker and the prayer by Vice Mayor Wilson.
Heavenly Father, we are once again gathered this evening in our city facilities to perform city business. We do ask for your continued oversight and assistance as we address city business. We also ask for your continuing hand of strength as we still work through this virus situation, as we attempt to return to the near-normal lives, life situations. Please help us as we restore to this new phase of our lives. We also ask for your hand of compassion and caring and love for all our communities graduating high school seniors as well as college graduates. I know they long for their celebration of their achievements and understand their desires. We want to let them know that we do recognize them and hope the best that they, as they move on to their next endeavors. And as a council, we express our congratulations to each one of the graduating students. The community has experienced several losses and we want to express our condolences to each of the families and friends. The city of Apache Junction lost one of our valued retired city employees, Kathy Conley. She served as our, in our community for over thirty years and was the history of A.J. Please be with her, family, and friends as they celebrate her life and faithful service to the city of Apache Junction. She will be greatly missed. We also lost another citizen that has served our community by sitting on several boards, Willie Howard. He was someone that wanted to assist the city as we move forward into the future. Please be with his family and friends as they celebrate his life and service to our community, and he will also be missed. We also learned of the daughter of one of our city council members, Krista Rizzi. Rachel just passed away. Help Krista and her family work through the sudden loss of her daughter. Give the entire family and friends the strength as they work through their loss and help them remember the good times she is giving them in her short life. As we continue to work through this virus, please use your hand of protection for all our first responders as they continue to protect us and our community. We also want to express our firefighters in the surrounding communities that responded to a local fire almost two weeks ago. They all worked together to protect our community. We also want to extend this to our military members and their families wherever they're serving throughout the world. In the Lord's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Barker?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Councilmember Struble?
Here.
Do you have a quorum, Your Honor?
We have a motion on the consent agenda.
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that the agenda be accepted as presented and that the minutes of the regular meeting of April twenty-first, 2020 be approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
So, before we get started, it's good to have everyone back and it was just not right having these empty meetings with people on the phone. So, there's going to be a little bit of interaction tonight. Well, I have a couple proclamations. So, we're all, all in here already, so I will not be shaking anyone's hand, but I will be giving out the proclamations. So, everybody just, you know, be using common sense like we are. I'm sure we're all much cleaner than we were a year ago. So, I have a couple proclamations. The first one is Building Safety Month. Whereas our city is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and economic value of the homes building as an infrastructure that serve our citizens both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster. And whereas our confidence in the structural integrity of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the ICC to remind the public about the critical role of local code officials and who assure us a safe, resilient, built environment of livable and economic, economical buildings which are essential to Apache Junction prosperity. And whereas safer buildings, safer communities, safer world, the theme for Building Safety Month 2020 encourages all of us to recognize the value of safe and resilient construction that mitigates damage and loss due to fires, flooding, and other disasters, and that the implementation, implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies has saved lives and protected homes and businesses. And whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I, Jeff Sertie, Mayor of the City of Apache Junction, do hereby proclaim May as Building Safety Month in Apache Junction accordingly. I encourage citizens to join with their communities in participation in Building Safety Month activities. Larry, do you want to receive this?
This is Larry Kirch, our head of code enforcement in building, whatever.
And I have another one. This is for Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month, May 2020. Whereas motorcycle riding is a popular form of recreation and transportation for thousands of people in Arizona and our nation, and whereas a safe operation of a motorcycle requires the use of special skills developed through a combination of training and experience, the use of good judgment, and through knowledge of traffic laws and licensing requirements. And whereas motorcycles provide a means of transportation that uses fewer resources, causes less wear and tear on public roadways, and increases available parking areas. And whereas the safety hazards created by the automobile operators who have not been educated to watch for motorcyclists on the streets and highways of Arizona are of prime concern to motorcyclists. And whereas the American Brotherhood Aimed Toward Education, ABATE, of Arizona, Southern Arizona Chapter, is an organization that actively promotes safe operation, increased rider training, and increased motorcycle, motorist awareness of motorcycles. And whereas all motorcycle riders are encouraged to continue to hone their skills no matter how long they have been riding, and whereas it is important to recognize the need for awareness on the part of all drivers, especially with regard to sharing the road with motorcyclists, and to honor the many contributions motorcyclists make to the communities where they live and ride. Now therefore, I, Jeff Sertie, Mayor of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month in the city of Apache Junction, Arizona, and encourage all Arizonans to look twice for motorcycles. And I know we do have representatives from our local ABATE here, and we also have Mike Infanzen and Chris Beals from, so I'll come down and give this one.
Does anybody wants to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor Sertie. My name is Michael Infanzen. I'm the state legislative director for ABATE of Arizona, and we have representatives here from the superstition chapter of ABATE. They're close to two-hundred strong here in Apache Junction, and they're the motorcycle safety and rights advocates in this area. I have some good news and bad news that I'd like to share with the council. While motorcycle crashes have been trending downward over the past few years, there was a rise in fatalities, and this year is no different. I know some riders personally have lost their life from distracted drivers, drunk drivers, left turns in front of them, and from being rear-ended while sitting still at a stoplight. I want to commend the mayor, city council, and Apache Junction's law enforcement for this proclamation and thanking them for addressing the concerns that impact motorcycle safety such as potholes, red light runners, and poorly planned roadways, which I know the city council is trying to address. The motorcycle community across Arizona has been working very diligently to bring about awareness to all Arizona drivers on the need to look twice. In cooperation with the governor's office of highway safety, the Motorcycle Safety Fund helps with awareness campaigns. This funding comes from an extra dollar from every motorcycle registration, so we pay for it ourselves. This year, Representative Shawna Bolick from LD20 sponsored a bill to extend the fund for another four years. It's over in the Senate right now, but you know how that is. They're shut down right now. Organizations such as AMSAP, the Arizona Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Foundation, have partnered with the governor's office, several healthcare organizations, and hospitals to help fund scholarships for riding classes, both for beginners and advanced motorcyclists. Apache Junction joined twenty-five other cities and one county in Arizona in making this proclamation, and I do want to publicly thank the mayor, city council members, and the Apache Junction Police Department in their leadership in addressing this issue and making sure the residents of Apache Junction and the state of Arizona stay safe on the roadways. This proclamation will be hung up in the superstition Harley-Davidson as a reminder for all to see to look twice. Thank you, Mayor.
Any announcements or current events?
Yeah, I've got a couple. The first one is, due to all the stuff that's going on, as Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Wilson said, our, our local high school graduates unfortunately are not going to be able to go through a normal ceremony. So, one of the things that we did was to get together with a group of local restaurants that wanted to participate, and the LDR Foundation, and we're giving all approximately three-hundred-and-fifty high school graduates in our community a twenty-dollar gift certificate that they can use at the local restaurants that are participating. And what they're going to do is the, the graduates will have the coupon or the gift certificate, go into whichever restaurant they would like to, and get it redeemed, and then the restaurant will take those gift certificates to the LDR Foundation and redeem them. So, that way the restaurants won't be out any money. Obviously, they'll, for that particular day, they'll be out, but they'll be able to reimburse themselves through the LDR Foundation for the gift certificates that they, that they bring in. And the thought behind it was two, three things actually. Get some, get some business into the restaurants because if the graduate goes in, they're probably going to take friends or family or whatever, and going to build some additional economic value there. And then obviously get some recognition to our local graduates. And then the third thing is just to bring the community together because as this flyer says, now we get to fund it. So, if anybody's out there and they would like to contribute to this project, you can contact the LDR Foundation, and they take Venmo. So, if you want to call into them, and then Charlie will process your donations. One of the things that LDR Foundation does throughout the year is to provide book, book bags and, and school supplies for the children in our community. So, when we do actually raise more than the seven thousand dollars that we need for this program, he'll just use that extra money to, to do that further work within the community. So, if anybody would like to, there's that. I have extra flyers later on. So, that's that thing. And then the other thing that we've got is, since all this started, and one of the things that happened was, our MultiGen Center used to make available the showers for our homeless citizens in the community to go in and get showers. And because of the situations, we had to close the MG, the MultiGen Center. And so, what we've been doing for the last, I guess, month and a half, we've been providing showers at the Salvation Army every other Sunday, and in conjunction with the Genesis Project, Empowerment Systems, Rhino Recreation Center, Salvation Army, and we've been making that available for them. The next one we're going to be doing is on May thirty-first, and it's been well-received different, this, the, one of them, we actually did twelve or thirteen showers, served right around fifty-five meals. We have hot dogs, chips, and drinks, and cookies, and whatever we can get. Just making this aware that this is one of the things our community pulled together to do for our, our, a section of our citizenry that was, needed some help. And it's, you know, if any of you have been out there and you go without a shower for a couple, three days, you know, people start talking to you, or maybe stop talking to you. But, you know, some of these people can go two weeks without something, and so it's just a reflection of what our community can do when, when times are tough and they, somebody needs help, and the community comes together to provide something. So, if you're out there and you would like to contribute, Salvation Army takes donations. Obviously, Genesis Project serves meals to our community, not just the homeless, but, you know, low-income and stuff. And so, lots of nonprofits out there doing work that behind the scenes you don't hear about, but they're out there doing the work. So, that's all I've got.
Okay, I wanted to do a little, I'll say tribute to Kathy Conley. She was the first person that I met when I came into Apache Junction back in nineteen-ninety. When we moved here, I'm, I'm retired military, and my wife had to, was forced to follow me around to different places throughout the world, and I promised her that when we retired and found a place, that she could have some horses, which she always wanted. And since I got the job out at Williams Air Force Base, we started looking at communities immediately as to where we could find a place to, to buy and to acquire so we can have horses. Went to Gilbert, Chandler, Mesa, Queen Creek, got different stories, or even got pushed off of, we're bothering them. Okay, I came into the city of Apache Junction and went to their old temporary buildings and went, walked in to the office and asked the woman behind the, or was away from the counters, has had her desk, and explained to her what I wanted to do, and, and look for areas that have horses. And she says, well, just a minute, let me go and get a map of the city and talk to you. And when she returned, she says, well, first I want to welcome you to our city, and then explain the zoning rules and where you could have horses. After showing me and talking with me for about, roughly about twenty minutes, and explaining to me, she made this final statement. I hope you find a house in Apache Junction, and we, I want to welcome you to our community. And I was extremely impressed by this woman in this. Many years later, in talking to her, she didn't remember me, she didn't remember actually the conversation, but she says, I would always welcome people to the, when they came into my office or my area, I would always welcome them. And this was her policy and her, what she did. Before I ran for city council, I had several, I'll say, sit-down meetings with her, and she gave me a lot of advice as to how to respond, and answered a lot of my questions. She was, she had the great knowledge of what the community was about and the history behind it, and I for one will be one that misses her very much.
Robin?
Sorry, he had me back with Kathy. Yeah, Kathy was a good friend and a, and a good person and an advocate for this city like nobody else. Yeah, I went to a Pinnell County Emerg, Economic Development Meeting, and the emergency manager gave a very thorough report which interested me because I hadn't heard all of these stats. The county gave out a hundred and seventy thousand pieces of PPE during the past seven County employees and volunteers put in thirteen thousand five hundred hours during the past seven weeks on COVID virus alone. That was their total job. He reported that there are seven hundred and twenty-seven confirmed cases of COVID in Pinnell County. We got off pretty lucky. We're fifth out of nineteen counties. And the interesting thing I thought was that the age group who got this, this disease was twenty to sixty-five, seventy-eight percent of the people in Pinnell County who were confirmed cases were twenty to sixty-four years old, and over half of that amount were twenty to forty-four. So, it's the young people, the younger people in our county who have been hit with this. The county spent eight million dollars in expenses so far on COVID, hence the reason why the supervisors are trying to get the money, the care money that was sent to the state that didn't get distributed to Pinnell County and several others. And it was, it was really an interesting report to hear all of these figures that you wonder, I wondered anyway. So, I, I really was interested in the meeting. It was a good meeting. Thank you.
Okay, I have continuing some somber ones, but I'm going to finish it on an up note. So, I have some more details. If someone could put that on the screen behind me. So, there will be a viewing and a community gathering for Rachel Rizzi, the daughter of Councilmember Krista Rizzi, who just passed away. So, we held this Friday, May twenty-second, from twelve noon to four at Seasons End Mortuary. All are welcome. In lieu of flowers, the family asked for donations to A.J. Paulson Clause Center, or the ASPCA in her name. Celebration of life is being planned, and a college fund will be created for her four children, and she helped a lot of other children too, not just her own childrens, if anybody knows about her. Also, I want to lament the passing of a couple organizations that meant a lot to this city. And one was, is the Arizona Winter Visitors Association has shut down due to, in part, from the COVID-nineteen, but also the fact that the, the curator, Judy Lutz, her health was not good. And it was a little bit inspiring, this, a couple days ago, they did a drive-by procession with, Chief was in it, and several Pinnell County deputies were there, and two fire trucks, and a lot of local business owners, and we drove, tried to get her by surprise, and, but she had, we had to let her in on it to get her out to the end of the driveway, and she was, it felt sad because we made her cry so bad, but it was happy tears, so, and we, and the city gave her a certificate. The other passing is of the A.J. News, which their tagline was-
The other passing is of the A.J. News, which their tagline was our local, our community paper, local paper. And it just won't be the same without that. I mean, anybody who had kids in sports or their kid was in a spelling bee or whatever, everybody has newspaper clippings from that newspaper. And it's just not going to be the same without that. And then on the positive note, the city is opening back up. As you can tell by tonight, we have our courts open, not the judicial courts, they've been open, but our basketball court, the pickleball court, the tennis courts, they're all open. The restrooms have been open all along. The playgrounds, I think, are just about open. The skate park is closed, but that's from routine maintenance. They were doing a fence out there anyway. The community pool is not open, but it doesn't traditionally open until Memorial Day anyway. So, so everything, I think within the next few weeks, we should be pretty much back to normal. And we're just, like I said, we'll continue to be, to be safe and smart out there. Bryant, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Your Honor, I would like to read into the record some communications that I've received over the last few weeks regarding Kathy Connolly. Kathy spent over 30 years with the city of Apache Junction and she started in April of 1980, not very long after the city incorporated. Here's a comment from our mayor. If the men that started the United States are considered founding fathers, then in the history of Apache Junction, Ms. Connolly would be considered a founding mother, said Apache Junction Mayor Sertie. She's one of the first employees of the city after incorporating. Her career began as a secretary and then a planning director, and then more than a year later, she became deputy city clerk. And then in 1982, became the city clerk permanently. Over the 37 years, she served as acting city manager, acting assistant city manager and on several occasions. And she was a member of the Arizona Municipal Clerks Association since 1982. Kathy Connolly, and this is from council member Barker, was the keeper of our city's history and the number one cheerleader for its future and those who were responsible for it, whose service on the city council dates back to 1989, 1899 was Robin's start. If you needed information about a council decision 20 years ago, she knew it. If you needed background on an ordinance, she was the one to ask. If you needed someone to contact about an issue, she not only had the name, but also the phone number and the introduction if you needed it. Kathy laid the foundation for our community. With her passing, the city is lost as a fountain of knowledge. Former city manager George Hoffman said, as city clerk, Kathy managed such responsibilities as the city's elections, minutes of the city council meetings, the city's records and public records requests. She was highly competent in those items and I never had to worry about those areas of her responsibility. What sets it apart for me, and I think for dozens of city council members and city managers over the decades, was her ability and willingness to offer counsel and perspective. At the management level, she had among the longest tenures within the organization, was able to help me and others consider issues that were from a long-term perspective. She always had the best interests of the community at heart. I also want to add my, my feelings on that. Kathy always, always thought of the city first and how we could move forward as a city. She was the person we went to on all items that were needed in our city's, our city's history. I also received this from a former council member, Anne Marie Sura. Does everyone remember Anne Marie? She said, while serving on the city council, I had the benefit of Kathy's amazing memory and her recall of events and people pertinent to the history of our city. That past history was a great help in making decisions to benefit our community. I know Kathy will be remembered for her dedication and work ethic by everyone who had contact with her. Yet I hold a memory of a woman who was always a lady, a friend and a valued colleague, Anne Marie Sura. And lastly, I just wanted to share with the community that we have received a letter from Kathy's sister that on June 19th, there will be services, a memorial for Kathy Friday from 1:00 to 3:30. And she has set time aside at the Legacy Funeral Home to acknowledge Kathy as a wonderful person. And as we all know, Kathy had such a place in her heart for our animal shelter, for Paz and Claus, she always advocated for them. During this time, anyone that would like to speak, well, it says, in lieu of flowers, please make a contribution to the Paz and Claus in her name. Thank you for listening to me share that in the record. And then I just wanted to add also, we've lost, the mayor mentioned this, Willie Howard. He served on three boards, P&amp;Z, our library board, and also our PSPRS, our police retirement board. We will miss him as well. He worked for the IRS for many years and served on local boards since 2015 and then on the library board in 2016. We're thankful for all that he's contributed to our city. He was an amazing man and will be missed. And then I, lastly, let's see, I also wanted to mention, the mayor mentioned this, that we have lost two major organizations and the mayor mentioned this, the Arizona Winter Visitors Association and the Apache Junction and Gold Canyon News, 20, 23 years. They will, they will both be missed. And then just this last week, we lost one of our employees who's been with us 12 years, Heather Patel, who actually has the next item on the agenda. We weren't able to get to it last time. Everyone, everyone knows Heather. She is now going to be serving in a very similar role for Pinnell County. So she'll still be helping us out and in the grants area. She worked for 12 years with us and had CDBG grants and home support and nonprofit community. I would like to highlight her work that she did with the community and a big part for diligent work with the homeless coalition. We'll miss her. It's work that's foundational for our community, that lays us as we move ahead in future tough times. She's a champion for our citizens and I'm going to miss working with her. So that concludes my portion of my report. Here's a big list of items that she worked on. We will be filling the position and be working in different ways to cover all of it. It's going to be tough. Council member Evans, my next item on the agenda is the council report. Matt, could you help me with that for her? For members of the audience, last, last council meeting, we were not able to meet. This was an item that, that Heather was able, was going to present and now we'll have council member Evans.
That's a tough act to follow everything you just said. Thank you so much. Some of this now is not going to be pertinent because Heather is not with us any longer. She's gone on to better things for her and her family. And this was her presentation to explain what the city has put towards our homeless community and our low-income elderly and just struggling families. As part, as part of our mission statement, we wanted to focus on quality of life, compassion and forward-thinking to its residents. And in accordance with that community vision and mission statement, we had developed into the following diagram that sort of explained how we worked. Most of it fell under Development Services because that's where Heather was. But it truly encompasses several departments. Senior Services fall under the Parks and Rec Department. Certain tasks fall under Development Services, while others fell under Health and Human Service Commission, our A.J. Homeless Coalition, ADA and Civil Rights. We are members of the Pinnell County Coalition to End Homelessness, the East Valley Managers' Committee, First Things First, and the Pinnell County Mental Task Force. Staff under Development Services serves as the member of these local organizations and staff attended meetings and provides input on community action. We also serve, Heather was the secretary of, she was the first executive committee of Pinnell County Coalition on Homelessness, Community Outreach. She's a board member of Genesis. All of these organizations, the city itself provided staff, but not funding. The city itself cannot fund any of these needs, but we can pull people together, the different nonprofit groups, the police, the fire, the court system. Each entity deals in a different way with the homeless committee, homeless community. And a lot of what was discussed at some of these meetings, like the police weren't aware that Parks Rangers were having to do this and Fire Department had a whole different source because they were at the beginning of encounters. So everybody kind of had a little different idea. A.J. Invests email notifications to over 265 local and regional agencies as well as maintains the city website with resource information. But again, there is limited money that the city provides to any of this. We also, through Heather, organized the semi-annual mayor's breakfast. She was, okay, and that is just, oh, that's the picture of the city's website where, at our library, if you're looking for information, this is one of the places you can receive some of it. Okay. We actually were the first coalition in Pinnell County, even before Casa Grande had one, having a homeless coalition, to take the lead role in the efforts of all of the nonprofits in our area. And we did win the Desert Peak Award for Public and Private Partnership Coalition and Resource Center, which was a really big deal. Since this is something that, you know, a lot of people don't, you know, you hear comments, oh, can't they just go someplace else or why do we have to deal with these people? Well, there are people that are here in every organization, in every city and every county. We had established in our strategic plan on the homelessness, we had several subcommittees. Can you switch that? Okay. And actually go to the next one. These were the areas that we focused on as far as policy, housing, employment, outreach and collaboration. We discovered that business people needed one resource list. People on the streets and homeless needed a different resource list. And we needed to know how, how are we going to get this all together? The housing issue is just incredibly difficult when we have such a shortage of low-income housing, not just in Apache Junction, but everywhere. So I was a part of the policy committee with a member from Genesis, our court system, Heather and myself, to make sure that we weren't creating policies that created more hardship and policies that were unnecessary, that really weren't accomplishing anything for the victims as well as the perpetrators, I guess. This would have been a whole lot better with Heather here. We were part of the State of Arizona Continuum, Continuum of Care, the Maricopa Association of Governments and the City of Mesa Coalition that worked for the laundry programs, hydration, heat relief, hygiene. The faith-based community is just tremendous in this community as far as what they contribute to these people. Our community partners on our last slide, these are all the organizations that contributed and were a part of it. For the size of the community that we have, we have a wonderful base of partners that have helped out. And I have a few statistics for our Genesis program, which is our free meals. They offer free food, free clothing, free hygiene. They do offer free showers to people, but they're, it's not free to the people. Genesis actually pays the city $5 for a day pass to the Multi Gen Center so that they can go and take a shower. So it is a free shower to those people, but it's, it's not something that the city is directly contributing to. We're paid for it. They have a volunteer nurse, all of the cooks are volunteers, there's the Resource Center to help people with driver's license, social security, whatever you need to try to get a job, which is almost impossible if you have dirty clothes and you haven't had a shower. Part of A.J. Cares, like council member Struble mentioned, they've started the showers at the Salvation Army every other week. The VFW on Phelps is giving out food, toilet papers and diapers too, at no additional charge. And once again, no city dollars have been used to support any of this, just staff members. Last month in April, Genesis provided 3,991 meals to homeless, low-income individuals, but they passed out 6,911 meals because you can take a meal with you after you've eaten lunch. And this is all donated money. This is nothing that the city has contributed to, which just speaks volumes to this community and our churches and our organizations that do fundraisers to support just Genesis. Council member Barker is one of the board members there. We've done a lot. There's still more to do. The homeless population is still growing and it will. But with, somehow, we have to figure out how the city can still somehow play a role, maybe a leader in the organization, well, structure of it. But right now, we really don't have anybody to fill these really big shoes and it is a big need for within the community.
That's it, Mike Darren, back to me. Thank you, Councilmember Evans, for filling in and thank you for that report. Your Honor, that concludes the City Manager's Report tonight.
Okay. Public hearing discussion on consideration of proposed ordinance number 1490. Sidney.
Can I understand you volunteered to be the new Arts Commission Lead?
Commissioner Evans, that's correct.
Thank you.
Of course. With my...
Volunteer? Thank you, Sidney.
Volunteer.
Yes, I actually did volunteer. I'm happy to be on the...
That's awesome.
Help, help them with that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, Sidney Urias, Senior Planner on Staff. Tonight I'll be making the presentation on Villas on Superstition, PZ 320. The proposed project is located on the northeast corner of Main Drive and Superstition Boulevard. The current zoning for this project is RSGR. The applicant is asking for RM1 plan development. The current general plan designation for this site is also medium-density residential and, and the proposal is a general plan designation of high-density residential. The formal request from the applicant, with that said, is the approval of a rezone slash plan development and a minor general plan development, or I'm, minor general plan amendment of approximately 4.5 acres for a 52-unit leased residential community. Here we have the zoning exhibit. To the north, we have Stagecoach Trails, that is, is zoned RS5 PD. To the east, we have a mobile home park designation and also a general commercial, which is Ironwood Self-Storage. And then to the south and west, we have two zoning districts, both general commercial in red and an RS10 zoning designation. Here we have the proposed site plan provided by the applicant. The entrance will be located off of Main Drive, taking majority of the traffic off of superstition. of Superstition, and locating the entrance as far as possible north on the site. All units will be forward-facing the amenity area. The applicant has provided covered parking throughout, central pool and cabana area, as well as a tot lot, and, and also garages on the east side of the development that are first-come, first-served for their residents. The applicant, as part of this application, has also noted that each unit will have an individual private yard, as detailed in that exhibit. Here we have the elevations. The applicant has provided four-sided elevation, four-sided architecture in all elevations. We have a varying roofline with multiple material types, and staff is supportive of these elevations provided. The applicant is only requiring, or asking for one deviation from the zoning ordinance for their plan development. They're asking for a rear yard setback reduction from 20 to 15 feet. As any other application, this, this application was posted on-site, notices were sent to the adjacent property owners within 300-foot radius, and it was also advertised in the paper. The applicant also held a neighborhood meeting on March 24th, where no one was in attendance, but the applicant did have one conversation with a neighbor of Stagecoach Trails, and, and they worked through their concerns. Staff has not formally received any comments from the public at all regarding this request. With that said, staff recommends approval of PZ 313, 320, subject to the conditions of approval filed in your staff report. I want to take this opportunity to thank the applicant, Dane Astle, and Rob Hale, as they've been a pleasure to work with. I am here if you have any questions, and so are they.
Yeah, I have one. Okay, on the, I want to say very east end of the property, where they were talking about putting in this block wall, they've got it going past the power pole, but where is it, does it go behind the neighbor's property over there, or does it end up, so you're going to have a, a space between the block wall and then the block wall that comes down from the north?
Vice Mayor Wilson, there will be no discontinuance of a wall, there will be a continuous wall along the east side of the development, with the exception of that wall jog there for an existing power line.
Yeah, because the power line, I measured, we have kind of walked it off, and it's, you know, I wanted to make sure that that goes beyond just the power line, the power pole, rather, because where the power pole is, it's got about another 30-foot of, I'll say, open space.
Yes, Vice Mayor Wilson, yes, the applicant will provide a wall along that, along that side on the east side, yes.
Okay.
Your Honor? You'll, we'll have a chance for the public to speak in a bit. If no more questions, is the applicant here, would they like to speak?
Yeah, I've got a question. So under the requested zoning, what is the maximum height that they could build?
I think under this zoning district designation, RM1, I believe it's 40 feet.
Yeah.
These, what the applicant is proposing is just a single-story product type.
Right. And so, and I, the drawings and the elevations say that that's what they're doing. And I'm just asking because this has happened to us. Is this what we can expect to be built, or can something later on, once they get the zoning, sell the property, and somebody else come in and make a change, and then would we have the ability to restrict them to the lower heights still, or would they be able to do the 40-foot buildings?
Councilmember Struble, we've addressed that in the condition number one of the staff report. The approval is contingent to the exhibits presented here tonight, so the approval would be tied to these specific exhibits.
And so they couldn't come back later on and say, oh, well...
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay, just want to make the public aware of that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, is the applicant here, would they like to speak?
Mayor, councils, my name is Dane Astle. I'm the applicant architect for the project, representing Rob Hale, the developer. I want to appreciate, let you all know, we appreciate being here tonight, and we're very excited about this development and look forward to it. I, I have no more to add from, from Sidney's presentation, I think it's great. If I may respond to any questions, if there are any, I'm happy to do that, or if there are any public questions, also happy to respond to any of those.
Are there any questions?
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you define the term luxury? You use it seven times in your presentation, so I was kind of wondering what your deciding luxury is.
Yeah, the intention is just to make clear that we're not setting this up for a lower-income type product. We, we had some discussions with one of the neighbors in Stagecoach Trails to the north, and it was a concern that this might be a lower rent project, and it's not intended to be. The materials used on both the exterior and the interior are intended to represent a more luxury product, which is why we, we've written it up that way.
And can you give me a timeframe on this?
I can do my best. We have submitted to the city, not only for this portion of the approval, but also we're looking to submit construction documents and finish both civil and construction submittals by tomorrow. So we, assuming we can get through our approvals this evening, we would move forward very quickly and anticipate to, to build this exact product with no variation.
And you anticipate building turning dirt as soon as you get all your ducks in a row?
As soon as we can, yeah, that's the intent.
Okay, yeah, we've been stung periodically, I just wanted to check.
Anyone else? And how many units is this?
This is 53 units.
And you've done a feasibility study or something, and for Apache Junction to say that, that obviously you're not going to build it without thinking that you're going to sell them or, or have occupants?
They're leasing them.
Yeah, of course, the, the developer has gone through the feasibility and feels, feels comfortable that this product is marketable and desirable in this area.
And when you, is, I, during the presentation, it was said lease?
Uh-huh, this is a for-rent, a lease product, yes. It's not for sale.
It's not for sale, so they'll be leased property.
Providing a, just a different variety of housing for the area, yeah.
At when, just to follow up on Councilman Barker, and when you get done and everything, is there an approximate lease or a rent, monthly rent that we're thinking, or?
To be honest, I'm not aware of the numbers at the moment, sorry.
Anyone else?
I just have a comment. We're definitely looking for a diversity of housing types here, and the lower-cost housing is welcome also. So just wanted to let you know that in case you had another thought in your head.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, would anyone like to speak on this item?
I was just going to...
You have to, you have to, you have to go to the mic and give your name and address.
I'm Rebecca Pennington, 1830 North San Marcos. I have the building east of that property. I'm a tenant there, and we had put up the security light on the power pole because we kept getting broken into, so it was dark over there. So are they going to leave some type of security light back there, or is it going to be dark again? Would be my concern.
Okay. Joel, he can come back up and answer, right?
Why don't you do the rest of the public?
Yes.
And then he could.
Yeah, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? A hearing, and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and let the applicant answer that question.
Yeah, the, the answer is absolutely, it's intended that, that this site received the proper amount of security lighting all the way around without exceeding any of the, the city standards of pushing light over walls and, and being an obstruction to the neighbors. So we, we intend on, on keeping that little area, especially an area that might just be landscaped and not have, you know, has a fence there, it's an area that could be, you know, if somebody were to sneak in there and want to stay, we're going to actually put a little gate on the front that'll keep people from wandering around in there and hopefully make for a more secure area overall after construction of the project.
Maybe you could give that citizen a contact info if, if she had any other questions.
Absolutely, happy to meet afterwards and talk. Any other questions for me?
I don't think so. Any more discussion among the council? And I'll ask for a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that ordinance number 1490 be read by title only, and that the reading of the entire ordinance be waived. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
So for anyone watching at home or just getting a glimpse of this, we did not just approve the apartment building by the roundabout. That was a different one, okay?
Different.
It was not as popular as this one.
Go ahead.
An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, amending the Apache Junction, Arizona zoning ordinance by amending the zoning district map, City of Apache Junction, Arizona, changing the zoning district classification for the property described in rezoning case PZ-3-20, a request by Rob Hale and Dwayne Astle of Edifice Architecture, from general rural low-density, single-family detached residential, known as RS-GR, to high-density multi-family or multiple-family residential by plan development, known as RM-1PD, and a minor general plan amendment from medium-density residential to high-density residential for a 52-unit leased residential community, repealing any conflicting provisions and providing for severability.
We have a motion on that.
Your Honor, I move that ordinance number 1490, as read by the city clerk, be approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor, motion passes.
Presentation, discussion, public hearing, and consideration of a request for continuance on case PZ-1-20, Old West Highway Village. Sidney, again.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Senior, Sidney Urias, Senior Planner on Staff, again. The applicant for Old, Old West Highway Village rezoning request has, has requested the tabling of this item. Due to the COVID-19 crisis, his design staff has experienced some turnover and hasn't been able to move forward with the application as they originally intended, or as, at, at the time originally that they scheduled. The applicant is requesting this, this item be tabled to a later date, where you will see this sometime in the near future.
Okay.
No, no dates specific?
Vice Mayor Wilson, not yet. They're working on perhaps acquiring another design firm. The design firm that was currently working on the application has some complications in staffing due to the COVID crisis.
Joel, do we have to vote on that?
Yeah.
Yes, you do, and I just want to point out, if they come back with a different plan, they still have to go back through planning and zoning. So if they change anything significant, they would have to do that anyway.
Any more discussion before I ask for a motion? So who would like to make that motion?
Your Honor, I move that zoning case PZ-1-20 related to Old West Highway Villages be tabled due to the applicant's inability to provide the necessary additional information due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Presentation, discussion, and possible consideration of a settlement release and temporary construction easement agreement between the City of Apache Junction and Sunrise Shadows. Joel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item kind of goes, goes back a ways, and Matt, if you could put up the, the exhibits to the agreement...
Just give me a moment to pull it up.
This involves drainage, and drainage is very challenging in this city, since we do not really have any stormwater plan, we don't have the money to have, I remember, I think there was estimates of $300 million to do a real plan and, and improvements, and that was like 10 years ago, so I'm sure it's more. But basically, it's not all just because of our drainage system, it's also onsite maintenance. So when a developer develops their property, they are supposed to maintain their common areas. And these, the residents, yes, if you could go to the next...
Which one's the next?
Uh, that one right there. Yeah, you're turning, that's, that's great. So what's happening is, if you look at lot number 924 for, for reference, at the top, right-hand area, the wash goes down past 10th Avenue, continues in the red cross-hatched areas. Then it's supposed to continue on where the hand is, but if you would take the hand up, Pat, go up to 11th Avenue, Matt?
This way?
No, I'm sorry, go up, and keep going, and stop right there. So what's happening is, and there's another picture in the, what I'd like you to do, Matt, if you can go to another picture that's attached to the memo, and I want to show you what, where the hand is, what it looks like, and has looked like for a while. Okay, the middle picture is essentially pipes where water is supposed to flow underneath 11th Avenue. So as you can see, it's not very clear, is it? So what's happening is, and what happened on, if you down, go to the next picture down, that picture is from September of 2019. So if you would go back to the, the original one, and I want to, that picture right there is in front of one of those homes, and it's the one, I believe it's 9, 985, or 967, or 943, I forget which one it is. So take the hand and go over to the left a little bit, keep going, and stop right there.
Right in there.
That's where I believe that photo was taken. So what's happening is, it blocks where the hand is, oh, go back, if you could go back up, I'm sorry. Okay, and then take that directly west, and it go, well, go into the little park. So what happens is, it floods into that park, and then goes onto the road, and then it floods the, the residents' homes. There's about six or seven that actually get water. So there were discussions with residents and city staff, and there was some factual issues regarding the original subdivision language that dealt with who was responsible for that onsite maintenance of the pipes underneath the road. That's the question, who's supposed to maintain those? So there was some language that went, that could have gone both ways, although I still think we'd win in court, but we decided to settle this matter through this release. There's going to be a one-time assistance to the subdivision, where the public work staff will go where the cross-hatch areas are, and they will clean out the areas, they will also clean underneath the road, the pipes, so that water can flow like it's supposed to, and then continue on through the stormwater system in Apache Junction. The city manager was involved in negotiations, as I was, and some residents, at one point, some attorneys got involved, so that got much more complicated, and also some civil engineers, that's when it really got complicated. However, we did settle the language. So what you have before you is a settlement and a release, and there's also a need for a temporary construction easement agreement, and the cost of this work will not exceed $10,000. So if you have any questions, we can get Emile on the line, I don't think he's on the line right now, but we can get him if you have any technical engineering questions, or maybe Matt and Bryant can answer the questions.
Your Honor, I would just add, this is a, to my, from my perspective, working in partnership with our community... with our community, what sometimes happens over time in communities like this is, we had a resident come a while back, may remember, who talked about how the HOA became defunct, there wasn't organization. They get to this point, and it becomes such a problem that they look to us, and we have over the years. San Marcos and Southern helped out. At one time, we helped out behind the fire station on Idaho and came to agreement. This is very consistent with that process of trying to solve a community-wide problem one time.
Does anybody desire to have Emile on the phone?
No.
Okay.
I have a question. Are we setting a precedent by doing?
Well, you're, you're not setting a legal precedent that other subdivisions can say, hey, look what you did for them, you have to do it for us. No, the facts are, it depends on the facts, but in this case, there was language to look at. When this subdivision was approved in nineteen ninety-eight, ninety-nine, some of the language could have been a little stronger on the plat, although I still think we would win because there's some case law that would support us regarding the pipes that go underneath the road. So I don't think you're setting a legal precedent. You may be setting a precedent, well, hey, there's a perception that you're helping these subdivisions, so everybody wants help now with drainage. And that's something, this is a policy decision by this council.
And they understand that they will be entirely responsible under the road as well as the drainage?
Yes. In fact, in the agreement, it talks about that. And there are, they acknowledge that they have that responsibility.
Your Honor?
Yes.
So have they re-initiated the HOA?
Yes, I believe they have. In fact, Fawn Irish was the president, and I think she still is, and there's been some changes in the leadership. And the, what's more important than that is the management company. They have a brand-new management company that is very aggressive, and I believe they are going to set aside the dues, and they are going to do it. It depends who you talk to with the old HOA members. Some say, oh, no, that was done all these years. Some say it was, some say it wasn't. It's hard to get the real answer, but, and they also have an attorney involved. So, so an attorney's helping them with the process of managing the HOA.
Robert?
I've been approached on this matter over the last few months. Now, someone has said that the cause of the blockage came from an area up the road that washed down into this off of something that is our responsibility. Is that truth to that?
That is a theory. It's not a.
I mean, is the material that's in there, the same material that was used?
Well, if you, I don't know what's in there. You can, it's blocked. However, I don't think that is the case. The way the engineers explain it to me, this is a long-term buildup of silt because of, there's no real drainage system that the city has. There's also, if you look to the north, Golden Sun Mobile Home Park, there's been some issues with some spaces, and we're actually working with them also on an agreement that will discuss the wall. So when the haystacks went, and that's superstition comments, which is right, it's that to the north of the subdivision, in the northwest corner, northeast corner, I'm sorry. There were some drainage issues back when that was done, and there was the recession, so it wasn't built, and then they changed the name. There was an ownership issue, but there were some issues with that wash. And with Golden Sun Mobile Home Park, that is an old mobile home park that goes back before the city was incorporated. And there were some issues with the wall and how it was built, and so where the spaces were located. So that part where it goes down, right next to space number nine twenty-four is where the wash is, there were some issues with the drainage, and also the buildup in that little area that you see where the blue is next to that one mobile home space. So I think.
Are you aware of that scenario, that things washed down from down the road, and that's what caused this clog that?
I've heard about that, but I, according to Emile Schmidt, there might be stuff in the pipe, but it's not because of any city liability or city, the city didn't cause it. This is stormwater runoff that happens everywhere. And this HOA, though, is responsible for maintaining a clear run for the water, including underneath the road.
So the argument that you were aware of about that, it stated that material from another wash down the road that the city takes care of broke away from that and washed down into their community, which caused the blockage in the drain?
I believe the city engineer did address that, yes. And he was aware of it, and I don't know if he ever substantiated it. I'm pretty sure he said that's really not what's clogging that drain.
Okay.
Because it's been, it's years of silt buildup.
Well, we're looking at over twenty-two years. Twenty-two years of buildup in storms. And yearly maintenance would be.
Years?
Yeah.
You would think ten years ago would have flooded the streets.
Annual maintenance. So clarification in this agreement will help the situation stay. Let's stay on top of this annually from the HOA standpoint.
It would have been nice to see a picture for the last several years in the progression to see if it had happened all at once.
Yeah, over time.
Any more discussion? Okay, are we ready for a motion?
Sure. Your Honor, I move that the proposed agreement between the city of Apache Junction and Sunrise Shadows homeowners association settling the responsibilities for maintenance of the onsite drainage pipes and channels in the subdivision located south of Broadway Avenue, down to the northwest corner of Twelfth Avenue, west of San Marcos Drive, be approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor, motion passes.
Presentation, discussion, and possible consideration of approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Arizona Department of Transportation for design of sidewalks on Idaho, Old West from Idaho to Goldfield.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Raquel Schatz from the Public Works Department here to discuss an intergovernmental agreement with ADOT for some pedestrian improvements along Old West Highway side, Old West Highway from Outpost to Goldfield, and a small portion in front of CAC along Winchester Road. Quick background, back in two thousand and seventeen, through the, through MAG's Active Transportation Committee, we had submitted an application for funds to construct pedestrian improvements in which the city was awarded about one-point five million dollars. Just recently, this past winter, we then also submitted another application for design through MAG closeout funds, which design isn't typically awarded through any of the MAG committees and the funding protocols, but the one chance that we do have the opportunity to do so is that closeout. And this year, it's been a couple of years, but this year was the year that they went ahead and they approved like four different designs, and one of them was ours. So in two thousand and nineteen, we received award for four hundred seventeen thousand dollars for the full design of this project. So the reason for this aggressive schedule is because we're using these closeout funds. These closeout funds need to be used like immediately. So June first is the deadline for the execution and all invoices to be paid out for. So this is why we're here to do a quick turnaround. So schedule-wise, the design is anticipated to take about eighteen to twenty-four months. That's just the ADOT typical timeframe. So we're looking, once this gets executed, then ADOT takes their time to select their consultant, and then we're looking at construction getting started as early as June twenty twenty-two. Brief picture of where the improvements are going to be done. The application says Old West Highway from Idaho to Goldfield. That's just because it's just the nearest, closest way, road. But we're really looking at Outpost where the Fry's Marketplace did their improvements and continuing out east to Goldfield. We also, we got some input as to, well, why, you know, let's include the portion on Winchester Road from Old West Highway to Sixth Avenue alignment. And so we were able to also include that in here too, as well. So the improvements along Gold West Highway, there are some sidewalks currently out there right now. That's just because when development came out, they went ahead and included those as part of their off-site improvements. So we are looking at in places to attach the sidewalk, which would be near the roadway, or detached and possibly meandering, which would be on, off, closer to the properties away from the road. So what you see there is, you see the yellow would be like a proposed, and you can see some concrete that's already there in place, and you can see the connections into the concrete. You've got some pictures here, some existing sidewalks out there, which would be the middle picture there, and non-existing sidewalks. And when the area is where it's flat, then maybe we can provide a buffer and then put the sidewalk out there alongside the roadway. So some of you may ask about why are we doing the improvements on Winchester Road? Well, back in two thousand and eleven, when CAC developed their campus, they were supposed to do some off-site improvements on the project. However, the city also did improvements as well, too, when, which, that we did, Old West Highway to Sixteenth Avenue, and it was a sixty, forty split, the city had sixty percent of that. However, CAC didn't want to construct the sidewalks at that moment, just because they were waiting to develop and get more buildings onto that, onto that empty lot right there. They did do some of their improvements, which they did the curb gutter and the streetlights. They were just waiting on the sidewalks until they, like I said, they wanted to construct, put some more buildings up there and build up their campus more. So with this construction project, we will be filling in a sidewalk gap on the west side of Winchester Road. There's already sidewalks on the east side of the road. And so we'll have continuous sidewalks all the way from Southern to Old West Highway on Winchester Road.
So is CAC going to help out since they were supposed to do this?
Currently, that, we haven't spoken to CAC yet about that, but our match is only five-point-seven percent, which just a small portion of Winchester Road, I mean, was less than two hundred thousand dollars just to put sidewalks in.
But that's two hundred thousand dollars.
Correct. Five-point-seven percent of two hundred thousand dollars. So that's some conversations we can have with CAC once we get into the design phase of it, to see if we can.
Share that.
So let's clarify for the record. So we're paying five percent of two hundred thousand, ten percent's twenty, so we're paying ten. So we would go to CAC to maybe get a portion of the ten thousand, or maybe, okay, is that where, yeah, just ask?
Just.
Yeah, see you.
Since it was part of their.
The development agreement, yeah.
Development agreement. I mean, it seems to me that we're giving them a bargain by getting the funds from MAG.
Right.
And just having to come up with a small portion.
We certainly need to let them be aware of, it's an intergovernmental agreement, let them be aware of their obligation and what's going on, yeah.
You put it so much better than I did. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we understand it's all government money, but it's, it's the CAC's money, not our money. So, yeah, we need to.
Well, yeah.
I can't direct.
We'll be discussing with them during the design phase and letting them know that this is what's going to happen, and that, yeah, we will be talking to them and remind them about the agreement that we had before, too, and see what we can do about getting, recovering some of those funds.
Good.
So our cost share, ADOT always has this thirty thousand dollars design and review fee that we just can't get out of. The design funds that we did receive, like I mentioned, was four hundred seventeen thousand. Of that, the city's match would only be twenty-two thousand for the design of the project. You move down to construction. Construction is estimated about one-point-five million dollars. Of that five-point-seven percent, the city will have eighty-eight thousand dollars to contribute to, for a total of one-point-nine million dollars, design and construction project, and the city's five-point-seven percent match is one hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Which CAC can help with.
Yes, yes, they can. So once again, the reason for the fast, aggressive time schedule on this is so that we can make use of these MAG closeout funds, which is only offered once a year. This year, out of the last four or five years, they haven't done any design projects or anything else, so city got this one in. So we are, like I said, we need to execute this and then also pay out before June first, twenty twenty, so that we can use all the MAG funds that we've received so far. Any questions?
Any more discussion or questions? Okay, I will ask for a motion.
Your Honor, I move that inter-governmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation for design and construction funding for Old West Highway sidewalk improvement project with an estimated cost of one-point-nine-six-seven, oh geez, one million, nine-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars, sixty-seven thousand, four-hundred-and-one dollars, with federal funding of one-million-eight-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy dollars, and the city funding to pay for an estimated one-hundred-and-forty-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars be approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor, motion passes.
Presentation, discussion, and consideration of approval on proposed changes to the agreement template for awarded health and human service funding. Larry.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Larry Kirsch, Director of Development Services. On March sixteenth, you were presented a draft of the agreement. This is the agreement that the city executes with those nonprofits that receive funding through the city's human services. Money's approximately eighty thousand dollars a year. So these are some amendments that were presented. I believe, hopefully you've read the staff memo, and you've gone through the agreement. So I really shouldn't need to make a presentation, so I'm here to answer any questions. The commission will meet on May twenty-eighth. There are seven applicants. Those will come here June sixteenth. So the, whatever agencies get funded in whatever dollar amount, this is the agreement that we'll be using going forward on July first.
Larry?
I have my hand up.
She had her hand up.
I don't see.
We have a few changes to make.
We have a few changes to make?
Yeah. Heather Patel's name needs to be.
Yeah, we found, I found a couple typos in here that.
Her name just needs to be removed. She's no longer.
Well, Jennifer, I believe we would have her name in there.
Okay.
So.
And on page three, you have Apache Junction Resource Center. It is no longer called that since Apache Junction is kind of pulled out of it. It's now Community Resource Center.
Also, just FYI, I guess, then, on the cover, on the first page.
Right.
The word "work" is missing. So in paragraph F, it says "scope of work," S-O-W, but it just says "scope of," so I'm going to insert the word "work." So you caught a few, and I caught a few.
Yes.
On the next page, the agreement in paragraph one, services, providers' duties, paragraph E, sub E, it says generated quality reports. That should say quarterly reports.
Quarterly.
And with those other changes, then, we'll ask for your approval.
Okay.
Gail?
Oh, we had another question, but their hand was not up. So I'm sorry, I didn't recognize you.
I didn't know that rule. You answered all of them.
Okay.
If no further discussion, I'll ask for a motion.
Oh, Your Honor.
Yes.
Okay. I move that the proposed changes, plus those modifications we made here tonight, to the Health and Human Services annual contract template for financial assistance from qualifying nonprofits be approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor, motion passes.
Selection of the next meeting dates.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that a special meeting of the city council be held June sixteenth at seven PM for presentation and consideration of the tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and a special meeting of the city council be held July seventh at seven. at seven PM for presentation and consideration of the final budget for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one in the city council chambers located at three hundred East Superstition Boulevard, Apache Junction, Arizona.
Roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
This is a time for the public to express requests, communications, comments...
We need one more. Item number fourteen. One more for the future meeting dates.
Okay.
Motion for meetings and times.
We have a motion on that one.
Yeah.
I move that an executive session at six PM and a work session at seven PM for Monday, June first, twenty twenty, and a, and an executive session at six PM and a work session at seven PM for Tuesday, June second, twenty twenty, be held in the city coun- council conference room and the city council chambers located at three hundred East Superstition Boulevard, Apache Junction, Arizona, respectively, and other meetings if necessary.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Now is the time for the public to express requests, communications, comments, and suggestions. Each speaker must have already filled out a request to speak form and handed it to the city clerk by the end of the city manager's report. All issues shall be presented in professional manner without personal attacks. Under the open meeting law, the council cannot engage in discussion on the issues presented, but may respond to criticism and may direct staff to follow up with the speaker directly and/or place this matter on a future agenda council discussion. There's a three-minute time limit for each speaker. The first one I have is Terry Kreidler.
Terry Kreidler, four eight nine North Gold, Apache Junction, eight five one two zero. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. I would like to review what the word integrity means. The Merriam-Webster Dictionary describes integrity as follows. The definition is: one, firm adherence to a code, especially moral or artistic values, incorruptibility. Two, an unimpaired condition, soundness. Three, the quality or state of being complete or undivided. Synonyms for the word integrity are character, decency, honesty, rightness, honor, principle, straightforwardness, sincerity, and good faith, to name a few. Antonyms or the opposite of integrity are dishonesty, evil, deceit, wickedness, deception, disgrace, lying, bad faith, and malfeasance, to name only a few of the many that I found. As the mayor and council members of Apache Junction, I have spent the last two years watching each one of you continue to make disgraceful decisions out of fear of what might happen instead of making forthright decisions with integrity.
Mohammed Mohadine.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the council and the city staff. Mamudmah Yudin, two three zero four North Cortez Road, Apache Junction, Arizona. I started the business in Apache Junction, started working on restaurants. An approach by Mr., uh, city officials, assistant manager, senior planner, and city engineer, asked me to open the bull riding while I was doing one point two million dollar gas business. After conversation, discussion, we reached a agreement to open the bull riding. The city do not have any codes for bull riding start. They said we can put the, together and we start working on it and then has been brought to attention, apply for the liquor license. Since then, obstacle started, cost several thousands dollars. Finally, we opened up the bull riding, but a lot of obstacle came from planning and zoning. Then after that, I approached by one of the council member, Mr. Struble. Came to me, the city of Apache Junction don't have any venue to do the wedding and all that stuff. I got the property 'cause he just returned from Florence. Approached me to do this one. All right, now they approaching, we bring the tourism back again over to Apache Junction, start working on. Then we start with the CUP, start with that. Twenty fifteen, the CUP was, I submitted the application according to the senior planner, Rudy Esquivia. Start the conversation, this property is a commercial property for last twenty-five years. Is legal by zoning, right by the zoning, small machinery, restaurant, parking, doctor's office. And the twenty eighteen, my parking lot was got shut down. The zoning never change. But why is that? Why these obstacle is coming from every directions? I have done every single thing but the city officials ask me or the council member ask me. When they shut down my, do I have extra couple of minutes, Your Honor?
You go.
Okay. When they shut down my parking lot, I have no choice left to file a lawsuit against the city. We are in, going through the lawsuit and all that stuff. City approached me. If I can drop the lawsuit, city will drop all the charges. They will drop the zoning charges, they will drop the nuisance charges, and we would like to work with you, it's gone too long, and how we can work together. Can you build the eight-foot wall? I agreed on it. I said, I will do, if that makes easy eight-foot fall, I will build the eight-foot wall. Not a problem. The city don't have a code for it. Then they changed the name to sound barrier. No problem, I will do it. As soon I signed off the lawsuit, then after that, what happened? Start conversation again. I already worked with the council, all the conditions. Door condition was disappear. Have to start all over again with the condition with the city attorney.
You are out of time now. Does anyone like to respond? I would say that we are having an executive session at the next council meeting and we'll be discussing these matters. So with that, we'll be adjourned.